35:37, I'm going to call the Berlin-Boylston Regional and Union of Sixty School Committee to order. A reminder that this meeting is being recorded and your image or voice may be broadcast.
And I'm going to call the Berlin School Committee to order.
And I would like to call the Boylston School Committee to order. So going around the table, I'll leave payroll and payable warrants for your signatures. And the first section of the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Angela.
So from Berlin, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll put the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or corrections or anything?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I am actually seeking a motion to approve that agenda. So move.
I will second it. And any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion for the Berlin-Boylston Regional and Union of Sixty School Committee to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm not aware of any communications this evening. Do we have any petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda? Okay. It's amazing, we're on page three of the agenda.
Keep going.
So now we're going to go into the reports section of our agenda. And our school committee will kick this section off.
Okay. The first thing I want to bring your attention to is the panel report that asked a guy at Collaborative. We met last week and they came to the South. Obviously I won't go over everything, but I did want to just highlight a few things. We currently have four members of our community who attend, who provide services to the collaborative. On page 12, we have two members of our community who are in the Orchard Street Academy. And on page 14 and 15, we have one student in the Reach program. We currently have one student in the Evolution program. They're all doing well. These programs represent significant savings compared to what would be the case if we were not members of this collaborative and we had to send them out to a private organization. I would also like to point out that one of the other advantages of being a member of the collaborative is the purchasing power that we get from being a part of the collaborative. So on page 23, one of the things you can see is a summary, a rundown of some of the savings we have. And so for office supplies, pay, or even school supplies, we saved almost $11,000 being a part of the collaborative. So, and the other thing about sending our students to a collaborative service is the piece about inclusion. These programs are held in public schools, so there's more chance of our students having a, you know, an inclusive educational experience than those of a private setting where it's set away from other students in a public school setting. So I wanted to just go through that piece. Second is, there's a press release in here, you probably already noticed, but we have a new commissioner, Jeff Riley, who's currently the receiver in the Berlin schools. And I think he will start on July 1st. That's that press release. And then the other, another item has to do with the STEM update. I attended the MAS, the mid-winter meeting, and I thought I was going to be out of place the first time I went to it, but they talked all about STEM, so I felt pretty comfortable. And more specifically, they talked about computer coding and the need for coding courses in schools. And one of the things they compared it to, they compared it to the way we used to think about typing, that everybody took typing. It was something that we, that everybody would, that everybody would need to succeed. And there's two things that were put on the, on the drive late. One was, one looks like this, and it's a testimony from MAS officials related to computer science. And it's a push to make computer science and specifically coding a part of K-12 education. And along with that is a joint resolution, this article right here, in which the Board of Higher Education, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, a joint resolution to try to get coding, a computer, a computer course, and specifically coding as part of the mass core. Currently, it's, it's part of one of the additional courses, the additional five courses, but it is not required. And I mention these because it fits in closely with, you know, as we start thinking about what we're going to do moving forward, starting next year with STEM, we know that computers, computer science, and coding especially, will be a big piece of that. So I think it's important for us to get ahead of the curve. They had a sophomore from Harvard there who's a computer science major, and he, so he shared his experience. And he said that the basic coding courses, this whole prevalent in most of the majors that offered now, that they actually, they didn't have enough staff to teach the courses. So they, they put the course online and offered it for free because so many students wanted to take it. So it is important for us to get ahead of this and make sure it's part of our STEM initiative. See, I, as I start working through my entry plan, and start doing interviews this week with members of the STEM Advisory Board, and, you know, one of the things that came through in those interviews is the need for STEM. But also that they said, you know, we don't, we don't think you need to start from ground up. We have, we have the beginnings of some great STEM opportunities, more specifically in the elementary school, like the Mega Spaces, for example. So we have everything in place, and so it'll just be a matter of moving from there. The, let us see on there is the Central Mass STEM Network is an organization I'm involved with originally, and still is, its mission is to, is to partner K-12 educational institutions with private institutions for shadowing opportunities, for internships, and for professional development. So our next meeting will be on March 31st. We've hired an outside organization to come in and talk to us about how we might get some additional funding to keep the network strong. So that meeting will be on March 31st, and I'll probably talk back out on that. And then the final, final item there was the entry plan. I introduced it last month, but it went on to the drive late. And so I didn't know if there were any more questions on it, or any comments, or anything you wanted to share with me about it. Since we're going to revisit it this month.
Can you share what that's sort of where you're at in the process?
Well, I've begun the data review, so it's sort of ongoing. You know, I have a table full of things I've collected, I've started to look through program studies. I've just, I just got through the ESS report and looked for some, as I mentioned, I'm not, you know, picking individual things out, but I'm looking for themes. So I did find some themes in there, some things that we've already discussed, Carol and I, that we're going to work on next year, things about, it centers around giving teachers more time to collaborate and work within their departments. So, and then as far as the interviews, I've met with all of the STEM Advisory Board, the non-education-related, some town officials. So I'm working through that. I have a lot of people to meet tomorrow and the next day, so I'm hoping we're here.
What's been the feedback so far from folks you met with?
You know, I, I guess some themes came back, but all in all, I can tell you from the town side, I met with the chief, I met with our SRO, I guess not an official SRO, town manager, FIA chief, who's had, I think he has five or six children, I think they've all gone through the system, but they all, they all really, really like the school system. They think that the towns support education. I think the teachers that I met with felt the need to have some additional autonomy in schools. But, you know, so far, just positive feedback. I mean, you know, I can believe what they tell me, so, yeah, so far so good. Trying to think of anything else that stood out. I think one of the big things that stood out was, why I already mentioned, was the need to have more time to collaborate, to do more with curriculum development. And so that's something Carol and I, we were already talking about, finding some time for them to do some work with other groups of teachers, I think, like the vertical alignment of curriculum. And just time to share best practices. There's really not a lot of time they have, when you think about all the requirements, to just talk about, you know, the good instruction they do and how they can improve it. So I wish I could give you something more than that, nothing kind of sticks out in my head except, you know, a couple things here and there.
That's good. Thank you.
You brought up that coding courses were taught online and were going to now be sent to HAZO, or the regular A class, they're not going to be online anymore?
Well, no. What I said was that there was a panel at the ESS, and one of the panelists was a sophomore student at Harvard, he's a computer science major, and he shared, he shared with us the importance, he was sharing the importance of having a basic coding course in computer science, and said that Harvard, there's so many different majors that require the coding course, that they had to put it online for free.
They had to put it online at Harvard?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Carol.
What sort of curriculum do we have currently for, is there a curriculum in place for coding programming, computer science?
There is not currently, but we're, we've been looking at that because of standards that came out last year, that was the digital literacy standard, that we really needed to focus on that. So Jeff's been very instrumental in pushing getting the coding in place, but right now we don't, we know we need that, I would say. Definitely.
And, you know, we, we think a lot, and it's just sort of thinking right now, I mean, once summer comes, we'll put it down in writing, but we were thinking of having, you know, sort of, you know, a connection, you know, a series of courses that connects the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. So in those classes, you would, you would sort of need a prereq to take those. And then also having a sustainable course that doesn't require a prereq that all students could take, that would give them that basic sort of coding experience, it would sort of be that equivalent to the 1970s typ, you know, typewriter class, something where they could, you know, that would help them in their everyday lives, or something like that. But again, we're just, it's just in the thinking phase, but it will be there.
Yeah, if I understand you correctly, it's not in the standards now, but it sounds like that's a two-year term, but you can make it part of their course name.
Well, we have digital standards in which there's, you know, there's aspects of computer science, the problem is with the mass core, there's everything else, there's, you know, there's math, there's ELA, FLA, social studies, and science. And computer science is in there, but then, you know, when you look at the mass core, there are five additional, you know, options you can take, and one of them is computer science. And so these resolutions and this testimony is trying to get the computer science to be actually one of the things you have to take, as opposed to, if you're off for it, you can take, if it's not there, then that's fine. And so, you know, we'd like to get it in as something that's available to all students in a few different, in a couple different versions at least.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Jeff. Any further questions?
Okay, good. Okay, Carol, ready for your question?
Thanks. I wanted to bring to your attention a very exciting and unique event that's coming, is being hosted by Tohoto, and there's a press kit in your, in your packet to take a look at as well. This is an opportunity to host a documentary called Forgotten Farms, and it will take place on Monday, March 5th, in the auditorium, from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. So we have the showing of the documentary and then a panel discussion. We decided to bring this forward, it really, really came from Tricia May, who sits on, is one of our members on our garden committee, and she is one of our community partners. She had a chance to get this grant through the Boylston Cultural Council. And so we're partnering with Tricia and with the Boylston Public Library, a number of other folks in the area to bring this forward. We actually have an opportunity to have the directors, the two folks who are producers of this film, coming to join us on the panel discussion. We have some of our local farmers, Buddy Wheeler is coming from Balance Rock Farm, the Rainvilles. We have Ryan McKay, who's, really represents the younger farmers in the community and what the possibilities, and we think of that really in terms of STEM opportunity for our students to learn about. We've, we have a number of incentives that we have for our students to come from the high school to hear, hear this program and to listen to the panelists. Harold Naughton has expressed his interest in attending as well. So we wanted to let you know about it. As I said, we're very excited and we're working closely with Tricia to, to make this happen. So put that on your calendars, please, we'd love to have you all come.
Just a casual observation, it sounds very intriguing and fraught with possibility, because farming is certainly part of our communities.
And certainly dairy farming in this area, as it has been in many of the areas in New England, was very strong at one time, and it really has not been in the past. We've lost many of the dairy farmers. So what they're talking about is what it was like in the past, where we're at now, and the possibilities for the future in terms of the local agricultural economy. So we're looking at, from that perspective too, and certainly it's impacted our, our lands around here, that's really what we were built on, is farming, farmers, local farmers.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, very excited to have this happen.
Anyone else want to ask Carol questions, make a comment? Will you be bringing a farming animal to our...
I think that's against one of our policies, I don't know which one.
How, will that be, will it be activism really, to sort of...
Yes, Diane and Trish and I have been working on getting the flyers ready for the end of this week. Ken is already on board, he's going to be doing some interviewing, and we're going to be blasting this out too. I'm trying to get other school communities to participate as well in the local area, so hopefully they'll send students from that area.
Great. Thank you. Karen Molnar is ill, and unable to attend tonight. Jeff, we have her written material. Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I haven't got a chance to speak with her, she was maybe...
So one item I've been looking over is, so there's a reference pointed here to a study, right, made in the...
In Boylston.
Is that ongoing, is it forthcoming? And again, I apologize to put anybody in the spotlight on her information, but it was interesting, curious to know.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Jeff, do you want to talk about it?
No.
And if, when Karen gets back and finishes, would you like to...
Yeah, I'd love to.
Excellent. So we're going to go to our tech.
Good evening. You have my report, and again, it's just two short items. Just wanted to make sure the school committee was aware that progress in preparation for MCAS is in earnest at this point, getting machines ready, getting service set up for electronic testing, as well as preparing the files for these to, for all our accommodations for kids that might be on an IEP and need certain accommodations to go along with the The other piece is our digital learning initiative. We were able to, again, leverage our regional schools, rural schools plan, and with that, we purchased three additional Chromebook carts. Diane's not here to speak to it, but as we progress, you know, and it kind of even relates back to the MCAS testing, eventually all that testing will be electronic, even the 10th grade, ELA and math. And so we're trying to get more access for the folks at the high school though. We're in pretty good shape in the middle school, but the high school, and again, I think probably, Jeff, you've probably heard it already in some of your interviews, it's getting access for the high school is often difficult because the lounge are taking up classes, and most of the carts are very overbooked, and so this is going to allow us to make a better dent in the high school having access to day-to-day technology.
What's the size of the dent?
So it's, it's three additional carts each, so the English and social studies are going to share a cart, the math department will have a cart, the science department will have a cart. Again, that's, so in science, it's shared between three people, and the math department is shared between four people, it's, it's still just a dent.
So we're still not, you know, not right around the corner to getting that one-to-one level?
Correct.
How many carts are they sharing today?
So there's one that's kind of not assigned to the middle school right now, and so that's all the, and there's laptops as well, but a lot of the VHS students come in, or a lot of the kids are utilizing those, so it's hard to rely on the fact that you might have, say, 20 or 25 laptops, because you might have 10, or you might have seven.
So we're going from one to four?
Correct.
Look at it that way.
It's optimistic, positive. I like that. No, I mean, a hundred percent increase. Any progress, right? And again, I think, you know, within the plan, our replacement plan, we're not going to replace everything. We're not going to probably have as many desktops in this building as we currently have, and so as we're replacing things, we're not, we're not going to be replacing one-for-one, we're going to be replacing out maybe more mobile tech. And so in theory, if we can fund that plan as well, it's going to be able to continue to make that dent and getting closer to one-to-one.
Stupid question, but for the MCAS, can you take it on a Chromebook or a tablet or anything like that?
Yep.
It doesn't have to be laptop, right?
Correct. And we've had, the last two years, had kids take it on the Chromebooks. We use a variety, so there are certain folks that we want to have full screen, and we know for their testing purposes, it's best if they can have a bigger screen and have, not something where they're, you know, in a small type screen. And so we try to match that up. Again, that's all part of the planning process when they speak to the principals and the special ed people being involved, it's not, obviously not just the technology folks that get involved in this.
Paul, I know you've answered this question before, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the answer, but when will all of the testing be done on a computer? What year is the goal again?
I think 2020?
Do you know that I'm just looking that up right now?
Okay.
And I believe it is 2020, yeah.
I think it's 2020, I believe so. Again, from, from perspective of like number of devices, there's only, we can only provide so much support because we only have two people, and so we wouldn't ever probably be in a situation where we're going to have, you know, 400 kids testing at once, just because we couldn't support it. And so we have a number of devices that can support testing now at this point, it's more the day-to-day, they get away, and once they get out of eighth grade, they're not, they don't have that device in front of them all the time anymore. And again, hopefully this will make that happen a little more often.
Any last questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul. You're welcome.
The first item, I think, looks like the agenda's in a different order than my memo, so if it's okay, I'll go through the order that's on the memo. The first item I have is a financial update related to the region's excess and deficiency. The excess and deficiency funds of the regional district was recently certified by DLS. The amount, it's as of the end of last fiscal year, the amount was $369,073 attached to the Google Drive files are copies of the official certification from DLS. That's what excess and deficiency represents, essentially it's very similar to free cash in a town, so this is kind of the surplus that we have in our general fund for the, for the district. There's a cap, one of the documents shows a cap, it's capped at 5% of the total of the operating plus capital budget, which is 492,000 is the cap that we would be able to go up to, 5%. After that, we'd have to apply it towards the following year's budget. We're at 369, which is probably about three points, a little bit below 4%, about 3.7 and 3.8%, which is a fairly good place to be. We'd like to have some cushion there in the event of an emergency, but not be pressing up against the 5%. So if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the next one.
You don't need a way to spend that money for law school?
We need, we, I feel like we honestly need to save money, we're going to have some budget challenges we'll talk about next.
I've had all kinds of plans.
Good for you.
Clifford asked if I could share some information on regional transportation. This has been a topic that's been discussed, I think, by superintendents, by school business officers, by school committee members across the state. The entitlement that districts are entitled to, when the legislation first came out, there was an incentive for school districts to regionalize, and part of the incentive was that they would pay for your, for your transportation costs. The reimbursement rate was 100 when it first came out, and over time it's come down, actually it was below its current rate slightly, but it's currently at, for the last fiscal year, 73.43% of eligible costs. So what the chart in this memo shows is the amount of money that we would have received if we were reimbursed at 100%. This past year, it, well, next year is projected to be about 59,000 in FY '17, '16, so it's a little bit above 50,000 every year, close to 60 in a couple of years. You know, that's money that could go to a good purpose in our school district. I'm not sure what, whether there was an initiative going on right to...
Well, MAS is encouraging contact with your legislators to get them to, you know, increase the percentage, obviously to 100% would be desirable. And not let them forget, that's what we should be, that's what they should be doing. Statutorily, they're supposed to be doing it, so... Well, MAST is encouraging contact with your legislators to get them to increase the percentage, obviously, to 100% would be desirable, and not let them forget that's what we should be, that's what they should be doing. Statutorily, they're supposed to be doing it, so MAST has been pushing members to contact the legislators and say, this is, you know, it's an obligation you have, you need to work this out.
Yeah.
I know at a summer workshop I went to with MAST, there were two legislators there who are the ones who are pushing the new wealth tax, I forget what the name of it is, the one where they're going, and they're the ones who generated...
Are you worried? No, no, I meant, I knew the name of it.
I know what the name of it is, but it's, people make a lot of money and have a lot of money, paying more money for taxes, there's like a surcharge on their taxes, and they are targeting two sources for that money to be spent on, education and infrastructure, transportation specifically, and the ballot question that will appear in November will be in higher than A on it, and what's interesting about it is that it's a constitutional question. It will be added to the Massachusetts Constitution, which will give it more authority than an annual decision. It will be part of the Constitution, so they were very enthusiastic about it and felt that they had a great, a majority support within the legislature, but they do need to bring it to the voters, it's required because it's going, it'll be provision of the Constitution. Because the timing might not be perfect, but it never would be.
So there's some context to that data, which was helpful. So the next item I have is bond financing, and again, this is, you might recall, felt like we just did this, I feel like I've just done it twice, and this will be basically to secure long-term debt, so we won't have to keep doing this every month, every six months or every year. The Tohoto project is closed, we've received our final MSBA reimbursement, we have some remaining balances that are on a temporary bond that we need to put into a 15-year bond. Well, 15, we talked to the treasurer, we're looking at a 15-year bond, I've attached some memos that kind of outline what the plans are. One thing that is critical is to have a quorum at the April 3rd school committee meeting, we tried to set it up so that we have a date that is already scheduled and not have to do a separate meeting, and specifically, the secretary and chairperson of the regional school district need to be there, as well as the treasurer, and we've already confirmed that with the treasurer, and the stamp that you have, the official stamp of the district. So we anticipate it'll be about $3.2 to $3.3 million, we're planning on 3.5% as the interest rate, we're hopeful that it'll be a little bit less. We estimate the impact will be an additional $277,000 to the capital assessment, split between the two towns, so there'll be some impact this year, this has previously been approved and authorized way back when the project was approved, but nonetheless, it will be additional dollars that show up in this year's assessment that haven't been previously assessed. Don't think I have anything else to say about it, there is a schedule in there, we'll say we've added in a buffer in case an emergency happens, you know, for some reason, that meeting falls through, we've tried to build in a little leeway so that we are not illiquid, you know, essentially, this has to happen, we have to get this financing. So again, if there's no questions on the calendar or the memo, I'll move on to the next item.
I just want to reiterate this, it's our April 3 regularly scheduled meeting, and you need the chairperson absolutely, and who's that person?
The secretary.
The secretary, that would be Miss Spencer.
I'll be here.
Good.
And then preferably, at least three more, just in case somebody's sick that day.
Obviously.
Right. So, yeah, so that will come, bring this matter to resolution, and we'll be able to move forward, and then we'll be able to, budget, we'll know what our payments are, you know, but right now, we're estimating, but we'll specifically be able to know what next year's payments are each year. Okay, the next item is the DESI end-of-year audit, it's a requirement that this audit's completed every year, we have each of our three end-of-year audits done that basically break out our school's spending in a host and a variety of ways that DESI lays out for us. The audit's just completed, they may have a minor finding on one, but I will get the results of the audit and share it, I think it'll be available next meeting, so I'm not sure if it's available.
Did you say there's something they want us to work on?
No, there's one number, I think, that was entered twice, and out of 6,000 numbers in the three reports, so I was told that one finding's not, you know, it's not atypical.
Okay.
It's common, zero findings is atypical, and more than one is, it can happen, I'm hoping for one or zero. The next item is the facilities update, so, and the reason for this is we had a surprise on January 2nd, we were closed at Tohoto, we had a boiler go down, the notification process didn't really work, and so we did some investigation of all the alarms in all three schools, notifications, issues that can happen, and our facilities manager shared a report on that, which I posted on the drive, and I just thought I'd walk through that and let you know where we are and where we want to, where we want to go and get to. So the first set of items are items where we have automated notifications, where we actually have a company that has a dispatcher that will call and notify local authorities and personnel that we have identified in a certain order for each building. So in Boylston Elementary, that's the burglar alarm, there's a burglar alarm, kitchen walk-in freezer, there's four temperature sensors that Steve's still investigating to try to figure out, you know, what exactly, what type, you know, is that they're linked up to the notification system, but the thresholds that are used and what the purpose is wasn't clear to him, so we're going to investigate that further. In Berlin, the burglar alarm, the walk-in freezer, again, if it gets too warm, and the fire alarm panel are all hooked up to this notification system. In Tohoto, it's the burglar and fire alarm, and what's missing from this is HVAC controls, we'll kind of look at next. The next set is notifications that take place by the building management system, and this system sends emails out to individuals. Boylston's building management system is not functional, it's old, and we potentially need to look into replacing it, it's not a significant expense, and it's something that Steve will look at, but I think we're going to look to prioritize things that we can achieve quickly. The, in Berlin, the Berlin management system, I should say, Berlin and in Tohoto, they have a similar issue, an email is sent out, so if a boiler were to fail, you can imagine an email, that might not be too helpful if somebody's sleeping, they're not going to be reading their email. So what we want to get to is, and I've talked to a person in our collaborative group, which is another benefit of the collaborative, who has systems set up where they basically can have basically a text notification or a phone call notification for that. It's not something that can happen overnight, we'd have to take some steps to make that In Berlin, we'd have to install some network drops, and the notifications can happen, so Steve's going to be looking into what that would cost. One of the things we discussed was, you know, do you want to have some type of notification where there's temperature sensors? Send a notification, thought was, you know, probably makes more sense to actually monitor the equipment, which are linked to the building management system, and they can communicate through the building management system, you know, to an alarm company if they needed to, and if, we're not going to have an issue with the temperature in a room unless one of the equipment pieces is down, so we really focused on, let's have this at the equipment level, you know, if any of our equipment's down, have a notification. So essentially, what happened on January 2nd is we did have, you know, despite somebody coming in on Sunday to check that everything was fine, on Monday at some point, which was a holiday, at some point, the boiler shut down, and the thought was, based on feedback, this is not definitive, but based on feedback from the technician that the company came out, it was extremely low temperatures, the oil coagulated, the oil is above ground, it's not below ground, it's not protected, and they were able to get the boiler back up, but in the meantime, you know, the building had got to a level below where it would be suitable for students in the building, significantly below, and wouldn't have been time to get it back up. So right now, in the meantime, that's going to be monitored in both schools until we have a, something, until we get through the winter and have a solution in place, that we have the ability to remotely access and look at the temperature in rooms in the Berlin system, and we have, the custodial staff is going to check on Sunday, somebody in the custodial staff in the region, whether it's the facilities manager or one of the custodians will be checking on Sunday on the temperature in the building or somewhere in the evening. So that's kind of the stopgap solution, not the long-term solution we want to have. And we're not necessarily going to pay more for that, too, we have central office cleaning that occurs, that we basically have it done after we do the central office cleaning and make a stop here, so there's no additional expense for that. So where do we want to get to? We want to get to a place where the notifications that we have for fire and burglar, we have the HVAC, you know, emergency generator and other critical systems built into that system, and so Steve's working on kind of coming up with some, you know, what's needed to get that in place in each building, and I think it'll be a little bit easier to get in place in Tohoto and Berlin than in Boylston, based on the status of the building management system there, but, you know, we're going to look into alternatives, and, you know, we can report back on that at a later time when progress is made. It's going to take some time, and, you know, we do have a kind of process in place to address it for now. One thing that Steve brought up is, you know, maybe we build something to provide some housing and insulation around the heaters outside as a preventative measure, you know, in addition to having notifications, it's great to get notified that your boilers are down, but if it's that cold, you know, extreme weather changes seem to be a little bit more common in the past few years, and I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't expect it's going to be minus 10 someday in the next five years, so the boilers that are outside out there are not being protected from the weather, aren't really prepared for that, so, and I don't think that's necessarily a huge expense, but that might be something we could do that's preventative in addition to the notification process. So I hope that helps provide some comfort, that steps have been taken to address it, and it's not, you know, realize it's not ideal where we are, but just wanted to share that.
I want to thank you and Steve for doing such a thorough process and seeing where are we, because apparently there are quite a few. It just, you know, we're stewards of three very expensive buildings, we have an obligation to make sure they're well taken care of, and also, we don't want, you know, I certainly don't want things to happen that, school has to be canceled because we didn't get notified, and we shouldn't have been notified by a boiler not working, so, thank you, thank you for that.
Obviously, at the school, it was a challenge, but I also think we avoided a more significant issue, had water and other issues sort of...
Absolutely.
...trapped out of that, right, so we're really fortunate that Boylston are in a positive fashion, using your team, just positive.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, the last item is the budget status, and I know that we have this on the agenda for, with the open hearing at the end of the month.
Yes.
But I felt it was important to provide an update on where we are, and so the attached chart, the chart that was actually at the end of the memo, kind of shows, and this is really what was, the top section for the elementary schools is what was already presented. The overall increase for Tohoto is not changed to 3.9%, but what I have received since I last presented is the foundation enrollment for the high school, for the middle high school, and that's the method by which the regional budget is broken out. And as you can see, despite it being 3.9% overall, it actually results in Berlin being a slight decrease of $9,000, minus 0.4%, and Boylston, an increase of 7.3%. And so when you look at Boylston overall, and when you look at Berlin overall, it's a fairly modest increase when you average the elementary school in the region. When you look at Boylston, you know, and I think we looked at, you know, I didn't talk about this the first time, but I did recently get some data, the 11.8%, we did talk about some context that if we had 2.2% increases the last five years, this year's budget is what we, what we would be recommending, is kind of in line with 2.2% growth from five years ago. So we're, you know, I talked to Jeff about this, he's inherited a difficult situation, we've inherited a difficult situation, we're going to work on it, and, you know, some of this is due to some new expenses, you know, we have a class size growth, we have some special education requirements, but the, and we anticipated that the elementary school budget was going to be a significant increase, the piece that was a little surprising was the dramatic shift in kind of the way the region's expenses are split out, with the Boylston taking 7.3% and Berlin essentially having no increase. I've also attached a slide that shows, so one of the logical next questions is, from Boylston's perspective, is when is this going to stop? We're paying more every year, a larger share of the region budget. I attached the current foundation enrollment numbers by grade, and so you can see, kind of, as the grades graduate, down the bottom, it shows what the high school enrollment will be, assuming nobody moves in, nobody moves out, which is not a realistic assumption, but it's the only data that we have right now, and I did want to just show, there are some large class sizes in the yellow highlighted section in Boylston relative to Berlin that are driving this, and that's going to result in another slight uptick next year, and then after that, it kind of levels out, and over a couple of years, it could be a decline, and again, assuming no other changes to existing enrollment, it could be a decline with Berlin picking up a larger share, so that's kind of a horizon, a look forward. That same graph is going to change again next year, but it's, I thought it was important data to get on the table for the town of Boylston to see, for the town of Berlin, too, I don't think there's as concerned about it, obviously, at this point.
My concern about this is that, my perception was that we have underfunded Boylston for a while, and there's really a need for correction there, but there's a significant amount in Tohoto now, too, and so together, it's really presenting a picture for Boylston that I don't think is going to be acceptable, and that worries me because I feel like there's a need for a lot of this, so.
Right, I don't think this will be, it seemed, it just intuitively seems like it's going to be more than the town can absorb. You know, we have more work to do, we have some preliminary numbers in the regional budget, but, you know, every dollar, we kind of, if we were to find some saves in the regional budget, 65% of that would be saved in Boylston, not 100% of it. You know, we need to look at the incoming enrollments, too, there's one school teacher ad that is baseline anticipated enrollments, requiring three teachers in either the first or second, first grade or kindergarten. three teachers in either the first or, or first grade or kindergarten. You know, we, last year, we had to add that after the budget was approved. You know, do, do, so there's some questions that we have to address. But I did want to highlight that we have, I think, some challenges, probably have some work to do. And I want to share this information with the town, just to give them a heads up and...
Can I ask a dumb question?
No dumb questions.
Can you apply excess and deficiency to reduce this at all?
We can. That would be...
Then we have to be to vote.
That would be just at the region, you can't apply it to the elementary school. And then next year, when we, so this happens with school choice, too. So just to, this, use the same analogy for, for, for Boylston, the way we use reserve funds, school choice, it's just like using excess and deficiency, we can take the school choice. So we used 193,000 last year, we're going to be taking in 70,000 this year. Some kids that were school choice from another town actually moved into town, so we're getting less. The, you know, that, so we have $120,000 deficit this year in the school choice that we're scheduled to use, we'll run out of it in a couple of years if we do that. And, and so we need to ratchet back the school choice we're using, and when we do, then that means that we have to, we're basically going to have an increase in our general funds budget. So if we use more E and D, that means that if I don't use the same E and D the following year, then I'm going to have an increase by the amount of E and D that I reduced. Does that make sense?
Just taking a dumb road.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I think, I would say, has been happening. And we know that the 40,000 approved at town meeting was to kind of help kick it down a road a little bit, that 40,000 less, that they gave us last year helped last year to that we can use 40,000 more school choice this year and less general funds. That did two things, one, that meant that we were using, but then it essentially means that we had $40,000 gap created just from that. So that's where we are. It's not good news, but we're not done, and we're going to continue to look through, I think there's some, it's the magnitude of it that's, that's the concern. And the, you know, the breakout of the region has created some additional pressure. I think that, you know, our first pass 3.9% was pretty modest for a first pass increase. And, you know, we hope to get that down further. But, but the way it's being split, Boylston picking up a larger share. And there's a little, little bit more, too, there's a minimum local contribution piece that when we split the regional budget, it's just the amount above the town's minimum local contribution that gets split based on those ratios. And, and so I need to do some research. Boylston's minimum local contribution increased significantly, and Berlin's did not for the region. And, and what that essentially represents is the community's capacity to pay, I would say, is the way that the Department of Revenue looks at it. So I want to look into last year versus this year, see if I can get some data that helps me understand a little bit more why they would have Boylston's minimum local contribution increase so much.
Is that driven by, is driven by revenue to the town from property tax or other?
It's driven, yeah, it's primarily driven, that's their starting point, and then they have adjustments they make, but it's essentially driven by wealth factor based on income of residents in the town, and then by equalized valuation, I'm not sure what the equalized part means, but the, the valuation of property. And so I know that there's been some increases in town, but I also know Berlin had the, some increases with Highland Commons, maybe that, maybe that's been online and that's, there's no, no growth, maybe that's already been factored in. So anyways, that's another piece that's driving this, so I'm going to try to dig into that so I can explain that. If I was a member of town, I'd want to understand that a little bit more, so that's kind of a, I mean, ultimately, unless they made a mistake, which I don't think they did, it is what it is, but obviously, we want to be able to explain why it's increased.
Well, in terms of Highland Commons, it's mostly built out at this point, not completely, of course. And only half of Highland Commons is in Berlin, so.
Okay.
It's not like the whole development makes Berlin wealthier, it's only a portion of it. So while it would have some effect, it's not going to be as much as one would think.
Yeah.
But it sounds to me like the analysis is that Boylston is the wealthier community and because they're saying their minimum local contribution is higher, right? And don't they do these wealth factors and things like that? Are they averages, like three-year averages?
I have to look at that. I don't have that one in memory. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't use it to me every time, but...
No, I will, I will look into that. So I, and I actually will have something prepared to be able to explain that at the end of February. I just wanted to give a kind of a heads up of where we are.
And I don't think it's even a reflection, we always use the term doesn't look good or bad, it's just its reality.
Yeah.
Of what we're facing. And, and I think at the end of the day, we have an obligation to provide a service to the kids on the town in order to continue on the successful path we're on. That's the reality. And I think that's what we have that for. We'll let everyone else perceive the good and the bad part of it.
Right. Yeah.
And we're just, we're just dating back.
Well, as, as school community members, you don't have an obligation, we have an obligation to, you know, be physically prudent, but also to advocate for the needs of the school system. And if sometimes those two goals collide, and, and that's, that's our responsibility.
So thank you, Bob, and everyone who's contributed to that, because I know a lot of folks helped with it.
Yeah. Well, I hate to hit it on that note, but that's the last of my ideas.
Lori, would you like to give a very quick update?
A very quick update. The regionalization subcommittee has been taking its show on the road. We've done four presentations over the last month or so. The first was the Berlin FinCom, the second was Boylston Selectmen, Select Board. We just did last night a presentation to the Berlin Select Board, and Angela and Rich?
Richard was there.
Did a presentation for Link, which is the PTO in Berlin. We're scheduled to present tomorrow night to the PTO here. I don't know if that's likely to occur or not, based on weather. The process is extremely educational of bringing the messaging to the community. It's, I think, in general, I don't think we've had terrific reactions. I think people have been, tried to be very helpful, giving us tips and suggestions. On the one hand, I think some people want to see more detail than we're presenting, and on the other hand, some people want less and want us to shut up sooner. So it's, it's kind of a combination. We definitely are learning a ton by doing this. People have raised really good issues, asked really good questions, and I think each time we do it, we try to incorporate what we're learning and try to get better at bringing the case forward. Angela has also been working with Libby, who is a parent and who's a member of the subcommittee and who's now taken over the newsletter. And they're, they've taken a really different approach for the newsletter, it's really a personal approach, sharing stories. And we know that that kind of stuff is really important. I think one of the things, actually Jeff introduced a new thought last night, at least to me, around what local control looks like and what it feels like. And he, he's brought to the table something from Quabak, was that one's from?
Oh, Quabak.
Quabak, sorry. Which is a different take on local control that is, they could, in fact, in my opinion, might be worth discussing at our next meeting, which is February 13, about introducing it as an addition to the budgetary local control that we're introducing. And that is the idea of forming sort of educational advisory boards in each community so that the community can, has a sense that they also have local control from the educational perspective, not just from the budget. So that's something we'll explore further and talk more about. I think the other thing we certainly understand and have heard repeatedly is that while people are intrigued at local control, I think they need a more detailed picture of what that really looks like, what that really means. So I think we're, we're going to work on that piece. What else? Angela, Jeff, Bob?
Well, I thought I'd been to your presentation at the Berlin FinCom and your presentation at the Berlin Selectmen. And I could see that the Berlin Selectmen presentation, you had refined your presentation and had worked on it. And not that I thought that it was not good the first time, but you made it even better. And when you said earlier that you've learned a lot from these presentations, I think that's demonstrated in your presentation. It's, it's, I don't want to say it's more thorough, because it was thorough at the beginning, but it is definitely improving quality of what I thought it was bad to begin with. But you, you're listening to what people are saying and you, you're incorporating it. So that, that's very good. I just want to remind us that we need a warrant article by Monday.
Yeah, I know.
So I just want to forget to remind you. I know you haven't forgotten, but...
We didn't forget. I, my intent, Jeff, is to sort it with you, my thought was that I would email Russ and ask him to propose some language for both of the warrants to use as the placeholders at least, until we have to do the final warrant.
Yeah. Yeah, he needs to do that.
Yeah.
We can't do that.
No.
No. And he is on retainer.
We discussed that at length, didn't we?
And the Berlin Selectmen were very impressed that we have our attorney on retainer.
I'll add that I attended the Boylston Select Board presentation and, and they did an excellent job. And actually, I was very impressed in how the group handled some of the interesting questions brought up by that particular select board. And I think the key was, you, though we're getting close to timeframe to when we're, we'll be coming to a culmination of this, you know, you demonstrated that it's still a work in progress, that we're still, from the beginning, you have set this up as an interactive process with the town, the community members, and you're still taking in that communication and those ideas and, and things that might pop up, even though they might have thrown you for a loop with a particular question at the time, but that's how you're approaching it, and I thought you guys did a great job that day of doing it. If I had one recommendation, you talked about the newsletter, taking a more personal approach. If there are future presentations, maybe the same approach, meaning you had, I think, a couple of members of the committee there as well that particular day, maybe you let a couple of them share some aspects of it, right? You obviously work on it prior to that, share some aspects of it, because I think, you know, they expect you to be prepared for that, that I think it would help, just an idea.
I think that's a terrific idea, and it actually came up at the Berlin Select Board last night. One of the select people?
Person.
Select person said she would like to hear from the principals and the superintendent. And I felt bad because Jeff had stuff he was ready to say, and he just didn't...
So that's a good point, right? Because one of the topics that came up during that particular presentation was, and I'll, I'm recapping it, I may not be 100% correct, but the idea of how are we going to combine and leverage, we're going to leverage the idea of regionalization, but now, we're not really adding technically any resources during the project, so how are we going to leverage those resources across the board to say if the, if the topic is, how are we going to bring up score levels in, in Berlin to, to Boylston, right? And without sacrificing resources in Boylston to make sure we maintain standards there. And I think to that point, having somebody like Jeff and the principals share how, yeah, I think this is the way this can get done, coming from the educators, right? Taking from the topic of, okay, we're still education first, letting the education, educators deliver that, right? And maybe that's, so to your point, I think that's, I think that is...
Even having a parent come, those, that would all really answer, I think.
I think it would have answered the particular question brought up by one of the select board members, right? Where, you know, if, if the principal at Boylston was there and just said, no, I'm confident that we could do this, we're aligning curriculum and resources can make this happen, you know, I think it would have been, but you're very welcome, it was great. I thought it was excellent.
It was too long.
Cool, but that's all right.
Sorry, we're trainable.
This one presentation, presented the Boylston stuff.
I know, they've gone over that.
So anyone have any further questions or compliments for the committee?
It's a work in progress. Thank you to everybody that's been helping, greatly appreciated.
Okay, now we're at the business items section of our agenda, and the Boylston School Committee is listed first.
So I believe this appointment, does it require vote?
It does.
Does it require vote? So we are seeking to, so we're appointing Superintendent Jeffrey Zangie as representative of the Astabett Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. Do I have a motion from the Boylston Committee to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in. And then the second item is an appointment of Kristy.
Theresa.
As a member of the central office, to be copied on all of our emails and communication.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the packet is an annual report provided to you. Is there questions on that? Discussion points?
Great job.
So we're going to, so that's get submitted, obviously. You need a vote, so we need a vote on that. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To Berlin.
So we have a donation from the Berlin Basketball Association of $150 to the BMS Physical Education Program. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you, Berlin Basketball Association.
Yeah.
So, do you have a motion to accept the donation?
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any motion from the Berlin Boston Regional Committee to approve the drama club?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just, maybe we can't answer this, do we know the staff person that's going to help? They're usually a staff person.
Danielle Gardner?
Oh, Gardner.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kristy.
I have a question, is drama club going to take a back next year?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Right away, right once it's approved.
I guess that's your answer.
Is it?
Any further discussion, any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next section of our agenda, for our frequent comments and future agenda items, I asked to have the governor's workshop put there to remind you, not that you need reminding, but I did it to play around, out there, that is, at not totally, that it is scheduled for this one year. I would also like to have us discuss, have a few...
Um, I would also like to have us discuss, have a future school committee meeting about establishing a standing, um, financial subcommittee for the school committee. Um, not that I distrust our administration in developing a budget, and I think it would behoove us as a regional committee and as individual town committees to have people in the committee who are, who are really knowledgeable about the budget and can speak to it, um, and not simply rely on Bob and all the superintendent to talk about it. After all, it is our budget. And so, we can discuss that further, but I just want you to know that I'm going to put it on a future school committee agenda, have some thoughts about it, who might be those people, et cetera, and we can, um, discuss it. So, I don't want to discuss it now, I just want to say I'd like to cover it. Anybody else have anything they want to say or add to our future agenda meeting, our future meeting agenda? No. Okay. Before we go into executive session, I hope somebody's able to answer this question. Are we going, do we have to go back into session to vote on any of the stuff we're discussing? Anybody know? No? No one knows? Okay.
Wait, isn't this just the Boylston School Committee going to?
Yes, from last, this was on last meeting's agenda, where we'd have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's the Boylston School Committee, not the regional?
Not the regional.
Christie, is it just one item, but it's in three?
Yeah, it's, it's, um.
We're approving something that's either already happened or going to happen.
It hasn't happened yet, actually.
And so it doesn't.
And I have the binder for the executive, release of the executive session minutes.
Love this. So, do we have to come back into voting publicly and vote on approval?
No, not for Boylston.
But the executive session minutes are for region.
Back. We did not.
Actually, this session's up for regional business.
But isn't the review?
This is for Boylston. We're going to adjourn region in Berlin, and we're going to move to executive session for Boylston, i.e. they will call to correct to adjourn.
You'll need a roll call to go.
To go into session with the intention of, which is, with the intent to reopen.
I think you should.
Which is, yeah, because even if we don't have a vote, we can still reopen and say, nothing further discussed.
Yeah.
So, with the intention, so, do you want to close or?
Yeah, we'll be closing.
Do you want to go first, Angela, to close?
Yeah, do you have a motion to adjourn the Berlin School Committee meeting?
I second.
I made the motion.
Okay. Um, discussion, other time. All in favor?
Aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn the regional school committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will need a roll call vote to move the Boylston School Committee meeting into executive session, purpose of discussion strategy with respect to collective bargaining, um, with the intention of reopening in public session as a Boylston School Committee only.
Aye.
So moved. Second.
So moves. Second. Now, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry.
Now we need a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.